Good evening, everyone. I'm going to get us started and call to order the special board meeting on Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 6:37 PM in room 293E and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Chakovsky?
Here.
Ms. Sidey?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will now take time for public comments and I will ask you to please limit your comments and/or questions to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education and please limit them to three minutes.
Kitty Conklin. Hi, I'm Kitty Conklin. I live at 928 North Lombard. In tonight's discussion regarding the yearbook, if the conversation of or option of reprinting the yearbook comes up, would you be able to share with those of us here tonight any cost savings that you've identified that will offset the cost of reprinting, any reprinting, so that the net impact of the incident or pictures, however it's described, is zero dollars to the taxpayer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Clifford Osborne.
Hello, my name is Ian Silver. I live on 200 block of Wesley.
Wait.
Was there a list up there? I didn't see.
Yes, there's a list. She called Clifford Osborne.
Oh, I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear. I apologize.
That could be me. Clifford Osborne, 1023 Gunderson Avenue, Oak Park. Obviously, I'm not prescient enough to know how you're going to lead this dialogue or where it's going to go, but there are a couple of things I would say. Number one, this is not a passive voice incident. Mistakes were made, somebody made a mistake. It's not that easy. Somebody did make a mistake, if you determine that, and it's identifiable. If there is such a person as a faculty advisor, perhaps they ought to be called on account. If there is no faculty advisor, perhaps the superintendent needs to be called to account. In any case, it is not the fault of the citizens of Oak Park that reprinting costs should be passed on through whatever budget message you determine, general expenditures, law funds, whatever. It ain't our problem. It's your problem and you're woke enough to deal with it and I don't believe that the taxpayers of Oak Park should be penalized for the problem, however it's defined. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anderson, Anderson, I don't know. What's your last name?
Kennedy.
Thank you.
My name is Anderson Kennedy and I'm a junior here at OPRF as well as a photographer for Tabula, or as most refer to it, the Yearbook. I recently read an article this morning in the New York Times that opened my eyes a little bit wider. This article was titled "I Was racially taunted on television, wasn't I?" It's written by a black reporter, Doug Glansville, and Glansville depicts a similar situation to the current issue that we have sparked debate here in our school, thus resulting in our presence in this previously unscheduled board meeting. That issue, as Glansville put so eloquently, is the ambiguity of the "okay" sign, the circle game, the "gotcha" hand, or what has attempted to be claimed as a symbol of white power. This last claim gained momentum in February of 2017 on 4chan, which is a messaging board similar to that of Reddit. This began as a prank revolving around Hooning culture, which is widely not understood by other than its target audience, which is a younger generation full of self-deprecation and hilarity found to be obscene. What began as a horrid attempt at humor was soon picked up by none other than actual white supremacists who went ahead and took this symbol's current trending and decided to make an attempt at headlines by claiming it for themselves. This tactic works dependently, as it was and still is a point of conversation of the news. Though the circle game or "gotcha" hand dates back as early as the 1980s, the ambiguity of this symbol lays in the interpretation of its fervor. While some choose to find offense in it, others view it as what it had previously been known as, a game. This is how Glansville has viewed the ambivalence of the hand symbol, racism, finding its way to thrive and has been able to hide itself between a veil of double meanings. So though there certainly could be intent of malice in the gestures made, opening up the topic to the people rather than addressing the individuals privately has allowed a Pandora box effect of letting strangers decide the meaning of others' actions. The reprint, a hefty fine landing about $80,000, in my opinion, isn't worth that of the outrage that was being attempted to stifle that has still yet come out regardless of the attempt to keep it from happening. Nevertheless, the origin of these gestures and their inclusion in the yearbook, I, as a member of Tabula, was more hurt and outraged by the fact that I had no forewarning to the administration's decision of not distributing according to schedule. Not once did we, the staff, receive email or allow warning from our teachers. We received the same emails everyone else detailing that the book that we had spent so many hours working on would not be handed out as had been previously decided. I had spent more hours than I can count on fingers and toes four times over editing, checking, and dropping images that would then be put into this book, yet I was told at the same time as everyone else, four days ago, that my work that I had done on this wouldn't see the light of day until a public decision had been reached through the council as well as the administration here. There's been enough grief in this community recently and the delay in the release of the yearbook has had done, it's just done nothing to aid this. Dealing with the choices that 14 students made during the time while I had been mourning and attempting to prepare for my finals to end this year stronger than my current grades sit at has added more stress onto my plate than I have ever been able to handle and I can hope that the board reaches a timely, friendly, and cohesive decision that appeals to all parties and all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori H.
L-A-N-I-E-H.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lakey. I'm a part of Tabula Photography Staff this year. I'm also a junior. First off, I'd like to be clear, we worked extremely hard to edit out photographs that did not meet the OPRF guidelines and this gesture was not one of those guidelines. I resent having to feel like we need to defend our actions. We spent all year making these books. They're $80,000 total. The effort and time spent into these specific books are being overlooked. As the whole school found out that our book wasn't coming out the way it was, so did we. We think that spending all the money all over again for the book that we have physically in this school is outrageous. There are many other ways of resolving the issues without having to pay that ridiculous amount of money for over 14 photos that spread from African-American to special education. If we decide to pay for those books, do not take it out on our teachers, who may not have been tenured or who may be the blame for this issue. They had nothing to do with this. I think it's best if we give out the book as it is because it will help reduce the waste of the yearbooks that have already been made. It will also make many people happy that they got their yearbook on time and that people can sign them in the school. We would be saving a lot of money that way. Also, instead of recreating their yearbooks so those who don't want the "okay" sign in this yearbook, we can have them, give them a refund, which would cost less than remaking the whole book. Everyone knows that this American Sign Language "okay" sign is just a game called the circle game. No student is taking this as serious because it shouldn't be taken serious. It has also been in past yearbooks and in fact, I believe there were a similar number of "okay" signs in last year's yearbook, the cir-- yearbook. This circle game isn't going to be stopping anytime soon, especially since this game was created before these students were even born.
Thank you. Andrew Hibble.
My name is Amy Hibble. My daughter was part of the Tabula photo staff this year. My wife and I prepared this statement. I'd like to leave with our thanks and admiration for the professionals who have supported this yearbook staff. In particular, Ms. White has been an inspiration to my daughter and our family. We should all strive to be the epitome of kindness and grace as she displays. In addition, I think the yearbook staff deserves our praise. If we are properly striving to be inclusive, not marginalized members of our community, we should also sympathize with those who have worked tirelessly to cover the events of this school. They have worked to represent the many individuals and groups that make OPRF High School an inclusive and diverse community. The administration should recognize and praise their efforts. The Tabula students and faculty and staff have become a support system to each other over the years, long hours, weekends, and hard deadlines. The administration should be sensitive to the fact that a little more than two weeks ago, this group spent an entire idyllic day together celebrating the completion of their extraordinary efforts. A day later, a pillar of support to this group and the designer of the cover passed away in a sudden tragedy. We extend our profound condolences to his family. This community rallied around his family and as of this afternoon, made 248 gifts to a GoFundMe page, 86 gifts to a meal train page. The Tabula staff has sold over 131 sweatshirts designed by him to raise over $2,500 for his family. In short, our community is trying to rally around this grieving family and this yearbook became a powerful memory to him. The communication from OPRF regarding this matter does not address any of these factors. The same standard of desiring inclusiveness was not applied to this email as was applied to the underlying pictures in question. It made the entire community feel marginalized and excluded. The administration and board has the ability to decide the matter at hand and that is their prerogative. However, it could be communicated in a way to acknowledge the hard work of the staff, the memory of their colleague, and the real deep importance of this particular yearbook. By either intentionally or unintentionally choosing not to, it failed to respect a part of this community. Leadership that attempts to be inclusive does not get the opportunity to select certain situations to lead. It needs to lead in all instances. The pursuit of inclusiveness requires extreme care and its application is not in and of itself an excuse for failing to be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ian Silver.
Ian Silver. Thank you. Ian Silver, 200 block of Wesley. Sorry for jumping the line there. I'm excited. First, I wanted to thank all the people that actually have been on the staff that came up here and talked. I know it's a very difficult forum, but I just wanted to say that I have the utmost respect for the Tabula teachers, Mr. Ganch, and all the people that participated in that and that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Again, myself, we have four kids and I know the circle game has been going on for like 20 years. I've been punched in my shoulder by my children themselves when they were doing it, so we need to take a little bit of a step back in perspective on it. But again, you have a tough decision. I think though, you guys can look at it and try not to get excited about it. I know you guys are working very hard about it, to try to step back from all the voices that are in the papers and everywhere else and just come up with a simple solution that doesn't cost a lot of money and let's move forward from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all that have signed up. Is there anyone that did not sign up for public comment? Yes, that would like to make a comment?
I have.
Okay, please come.
Hi, my name is Colleen Hewan. I live at 350 Gale Avenue in River Forest. So, you know, I have two children that go here, one is a senior, and there's a lot going on at this school, there's a lot. So, I commend you and thank you for your work. I commend the Tabula, thank you for your work. I think when I look at this situation, and I made, I sent an email and I made some calls into the school today and I said, you know, what are we, we're having a public hearing, but what are we looking at? What, I don't know what we're looking at as a parent. I don't, I don't know what to tell my kids. They, they, they know what the circle game is, they know the whole thing, as everyone has explained. We don't need to go into that. But I said to my kids, "I don't know. I don't know what is happening. I don't know. I, I get the emails, but I don't know. I don't see the pictures, I don't have any details, I don't know how we got here, who reported it, who saw this, who then gathered to say, 'This is what this is.'" And it all of a sudden is now this front story in the Sun-Times with an article that has labeled these high schoolers something that may not have actually occurred. It is in the papers. So when I said this, my response I got was, "We respect the privacy of the students. It's over." They don't have privacy now. So I told my kids, "I want to go to the meeting tonight. I want to see who's there and what..." And I don't know that we're going to get the answers, but what was the procedure? What got us here? Who determines what? Who brought this to someone's attention? Why wasn't there policies in place before you printed almost 2,000 books? Why does the senior class now become a part of this? Because of what is assumed with very little facts, or if the facts are there, I don't have them. My kids don't have them. But we're waiting, but what are we waiting for? Whose decision? Those kids are now guilty. They are not innocent then found guilty. They are guilty. The Sun-Times told me that. That is a travesty. For whatever reason, and I'm not going on one side or the other because I don't have the facts, I don't have them. But as far as I'm concerned and what my kids have seen is, we don't have facts, but yet we've got guilties. And that's a shame. And the longer you keep the book from going out, the longer it makes it look a little bit different. So if the facts, the facts do not come out, I cannot believe what the school has done to those kids. I really can't.
Thank you.
Whatever the outcome.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else signed up for public comment, but if there are those that would like to make it, please come forward.
Thanks, I was just asking about that. Hi, my name is Stacy Saunders and I have a graduating senior and I actually didn't read the emails that you sent, I heard from him, who are busy working parents. So some of this stuff comes as a surprise, so pardon me for being late, and I'll set me up sooner, but it's important enough that we carve out time for important moments in our kids' lives, but also this community. So I'm here to say, if you saw the movie Mr. Mom from the 80s, when he drives the wrong way in the circle and the kid saying, "Dad, you're doing it wrong," I'm here to say, "I think OPRF is doing it wrong." And what I'm talking about is the yearbook, but not the yearbook, really. It's about race relations, it's about leadership, it's about communication, it's about strategy and vision. We're not doing it right. We're behaving tactically as a school and a community, we're not behaving strategically. And so, this is one example of several this year at least, and I'm sure there were some last year. We can also reach back in time to when the filming of the documentary was welcomed into the school and how people handled that. And in any case, think of it this way, we're concerned about the fact that Nazi types have appropriated the "okay" symbol, right? And kids, unknowingly to that, were doing the circle game and it was cool, it was hip, and they all think it's cool and hip and it's completely innocent. And so, it's wrapped up in perhaps some pictures in the yearbook and suddenly there's concern, there was some incident at the Cubs game a couple weeks ago, suddenly it's on people's minds. But are we reactionary? Are we just sheep being led to slaughter or do we lead? I think at OPRF, we're leaders. I think we're not only leaders for our community, on behalf of our children and the nation. We are actually well positioned. You all, right now, don't realize, if you're in a moment in time where you could be leaders to actually take back the conversation nationally in a really positive way. And here's what I mean by that. Imagine if instead of saying, "Oh my gosh, we're fearful, we suspect, you know, there could be these hate symbols," which are not widely known and widely accepted symbols of hate, okay? It's ubiquitous. You could say, "We're putting out a statement and saying, 'You know what? We recognize there's been concern about, you know, some folks trying to appropriate this symbol, but we're going to take it back.'" Because we're OPRF and we realize diversity is not about the things you have to stop saying and the things you have to stop doing. Diversity is about all the things you can start saying and start doing and start learning and start opening your minds to. We're different, we're better, and we're going to lead the nation in that conversation and we might welcome our youth groups, especially our minority groups, to take back that symbol. Get selfies, put them on Facebook, get them all out there, take it back because next thing, you know what? Those Nazi types, they're going to appropriate the smiley face emoji, they're going to appropriate the sunrise symbol. Why should we let them do that? We're still early on in this kind of thing. You know teenagers, fans come and go, right? They had innocent fun and according to my son and his friends and cousins from other towns, it's awfully cool to do this "okay" symbol. And by the way--
Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to stop you. It will be your last comment, so please.
Oh, well, what I wanted to say was that the word "okay" has potentially many origins, but there's a lot of people who believe that it's from the West African language, meaning it's all right indeed.
Thank you.
Let's take it back.
Thank you.
Here's--
Good evening, guys. First of all, I think I want to say, this is my first time in a while in a public hearing at OPRF or any of the local things--
Can you state your name?
But I do talk about it a lot.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Todd Hanson and first I want to say to all of you, thank you for your volunteer work. One of my frustrations with the OPRF community is that we often forget that these are volunteers who we have chosen to represent make tough decisions. This is clearly a tough decision and there is no way that everyone's going to be satisfied here. But over the last two years, I have watched a number of white nationalists stand on the podium in the press room of the White House and flash the symbols in a joking manner. I've seen it done on television appearances and I have to say, the symbol has already been appropriated. This is a historical document. It will not, in my opinion, look well regardless of the intent of the kids and I, I think it's completely understandable to believe that the intent was not malicious in any way and there's an alternate explanation, but these are not the times to be timid about this. This is a serious social threat and as a parent of three children at OPRF, two of which are in school now, I want to thank you for making this tough decision. I think it will, that it will reflect very well upon us for a long time and I think that at the end, our children will be very happy 20 years, 30 years from now when they look at this yearbook and they understand they were taken out and they understand why. So I wanted to come here today to offer my support to you guys in this tough time. The kids will get through it, the signature books are a great idea, there will be a yearbook and it is a great learning lesson for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
This is my fourth child coming through here, the first time I've bothered to come through. I'm wondering if people are aware that the numbers 88 and 14 are well-known Nazi and outright signifiers and wonder if there are plans to eliminate any of our math books and history books that have those numbers in there because they might be misunderstood to be a signifier. We are making a mistake, I think, if we give the outright and the hate groups the power to have us modify our language. That was how liberal became a dirty word. It's how social justice is being used by those who make fun of social justice workers to make those who actually are wanting to fight for social justice have that be a muckable word. We shouldn't be giving them the power to say that people using words and symbols in different contexts can't use their words. They should not have the power to do that. That's all.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, my name is Terry Kelleher. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to hearing some of the testimony. I, I think it's important not to make assumptions about whether this was innocent or whether it was deliberately a white supremacy symbol. It may have been, we don't know. But I do think it's important that the board did pause and did try to weigh the different facts. So I'll compliment you on the communication that went out and the fact that you did pause because I think that regardless of intent and regardless of assumptions, there are impacts here that need to be considered. And in this climate that we are in, not just in this school, but in this broader society in this moment, there is a lot of, all kinds of subtle and overt racism that's going on and unfortunately, our kids pick that up. They may not intend to, it might be in good fun, it might be a cool thing to do, I don't know, but, but I hope that you will continue your thoughtful deliberation. I know this is a tough decision. I personally would not release the yearbook as is because I think it is harmful. So I, I do think that your action is in order to pause and to think of a, a solution or some kind of action that can consider those who have, consider the impacts of what's happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment?
Can I just make one more comment?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Is it a request?
No, thank you. Feel free to email it to the board or give it to the board clerk, but we are going to continue with the business of the board if there are no others that want to make public comment. Okay. So we will move to our single agenda item this evening.
As you know, administration came to the determination for reviewing the yearbook. The cost of the reprint is originally $85,000, which includes printing and shipping. However, since Johnston is a partner with the school, they want to invest in a solution by sharing in the cost. The cost to the school would be $53,794. And this is an all-in price that would include a full reprint, picking up the books and reshipping back to the school in a bulk shipment with the target date of June 18th. We realized the cost of the yearbooks was not a budgeted item. Students and their families paid for the books within advance with approximately 100 being paid for out of the school district's budget. In seeking a resolution to cover the $53,794 in costs, we offered the following. After analyzing the budget, we are very close to having a balanced budget for the year. When building the budget, we included the active learning space furniture because we were not sure if the Imagine project would be approved by the board. Once the first phase of Imagine was approved, we stopped purchasing active learning spaces because the furniture might not fit in the new classrooms. Instead, we used those funds to replace or fix broken furniture. Since we still have funds left in the furniture budget, we can move those funds into the general budget to cover the cost, a one-time cost for this year's yearbook. The reprinting of the yearbook is a one-time expense. His administration's recommendation as a Board of Education approved an agreement with Johnston's to reprint the 2018-2019 yearbook at a cost of $53,794.
I will open it up for comments prior to making the motion or should we make a motion? You can make the motion. Okay. So I move to approve the cost of reprinting the yearbooks in agreement with Johnston's for $53,794 and ask for a second.
Second.
And now I will open it up for questions and/or comments. Matt?
Thank you. And thank everyone for coming tonight and sharing your views. This is a difficult decision and over the past four days, I've gone back and forth repeatedly over whether I would support or oppose a contract for a new yearbook. In my mind, although the administration's already indicated that it has decided the original yearbook version will not be distributed, the flip side of that coin is this question. Do I support or oppose releasing the existing yearbook as-- And we have turned the spotlight brightly on this issue, already making this an extremely teachable moment for our school and the broader community about these particular hand gestures. Now we know better. Back in the fall, when these photos were taken, I don't believe these students did. Only in recent weeks has there been a general awareness of the ways in which this gesture has been co-opted by white supremacy and other respectable groups. This morning, because I'm charged along with my colleagues on the board to reach a decision tonight, I met with Dr. Kurt Adams and reviewed the photos in question. What I saw provided me with the context that so many of us have lacked as this conversation has escalated on social media and in other spaces. Based on my review of the photos, as well as the context of the many facets of this issue that bring us here tonight, here are my observations. Before viewing the photos, I fully expected that a certain type of student, specifically white boys, would be overwhelmingly represented among those making the hand gesture. The actual situation encompasses a cross-section of about 50 students from throughout the entire student body, cutting across gender, race, grade, as well as activity or club type. For me, the diversity of those making the hand gestures is a huge distinction. The vast majority, if not all, the gestures that I saw are the above-the-waist and/or traditional upright OK version rather than below-the-waist and/or upside-down OK version, which I understand is seen more as something appropriate by white supremacists. Again, context is crucial. I want to credit the leaders in this building for being vigilant and for anticipating the harmful potential that could come from these photos. At the same time, I have to be transparent and state that those concerns, for me, are far outweighed by the many other concerns that we've heard from people throughout the community over the past few days, as well as here tonight. One of my biggest concerns is that if we toss out these seventeen-hundred-and-fifty tabulas, rather than come to the thoughtful conclusion that they should still be distributed, we're playing right into the hands of all the haters whose evil is at the root of this corrosive and divisive angst and the worst that we are experiencing. In reviewing the photos today and reflecting on them throughout the day, I find it compelling that there is no discernible pattern of one type of individual or group of people oppressing or targeting another type of individual or group of people. I will vote against approval of this contract with Johnston's and, at the same time, would urge a reconsideration of the decision not to distribute the tabula as is.
Who would like to comment next?
Can I just add some questions that I think it would be helpful for all of us to hear?
Yeah.
So Dr. Kurt Adams, I know this has been discussed somewhat, but can we talk about why a sticker wouldn't be appropriate or pages can't be? Can you sort of explain the administration's thought process around that?
We did. We looked at several options. The first option was to put the stickers on. And we contacted the printer for Johnston's. We asked, would it be flush with the page? We were told no, and that it could be peeled up and destroy the page in the picture. We asked about, could they take off the section where, because there was this one section, was two sections actually? I learned some new language called a signature, and that's a group of binding. And we were told it would have to impact two signatures, and still there would be some outlined photos. In order to protect the integrity of the binding of the book, they could only remove one signature and put it back in, and then you would still have the stickers. And so because we wanted to protect the integrity of the book, particularly since the cover was designed by a recently deceased student, we thought it would be in the best interest to just have the book reprinted.
Is there any option of, like, cutting the pages out in a way that's obviously cannot be permitted?
The, if you cut the page out, there's no way to put it back in. And if you cut out because it's a signature, if you cut that whole section out, then that too compromises the integrity of the binding. The sponsor actually tried to cut, he tried that himself and lost the integrity of the binding.
I'm sorry, I keep asking questions. Is there a way to expedite printing if we, for example, did not do a hardcover version but did a softcover version?
It's my understanding that softcover version would take away from the integrity of the cover of the book.
And by integrity, you mean like the structural integrity?
It's a textured leather-bound book, and it would take away from that integrity. We actually asked, could we have something similar for the autograph book, for the facsimile of the cover until we got the book reprinted? And they said it would take away from the beauty of the actual cover, and so they could not do that.
And then, this is news to me, but it's my understanding now, after some explanation, that the signature pages are in fact distributed every year to students, is that right?
They're distributed to students who have not purchased a yearbook. Seniors who, at the senior barbecue, who haven't purchased a yearbook but they want to get autographs. So we have some in stock, and then the publisher has agreed to send us more, as well as the trapeze has agreed to put four extra pages in until we can get the books back.
The trapeze?
The trapeze. Has ordered to put four extra pages in the trapeze. But Johnston's is going to send us twenty-two hundred autograph books so that students can have something on the senior last day. And then it is our hope that if we get the books back by the tentative date of June 18th, we'd have a special day here for the seniors to come and get their official yearbooks and get them signed.
Do we anticipate possibly creating a policy for next year for yearbook photos that's a little bit more expansive?
My understanding, the yearbook team, the yearbook staff actually followed the protocol. There's things that, in this country, as we said, change so rapidly. We do believe that we will have to go in and review. In fact, today, I looked at our publication policy, and so we will have to engage a process to update what that looks like. I would like to say, I don't want anyone to think that we are accusing our students of anything. And for us, it was the impact of what the publication could have.
The impact on students.
The impact on the student body, yes.
Jane, would you?
Yeah. You, both your comment and your comment, Matt, actually, and thank you, Sarah, for those questions. The idea of impact, right? So what keeps coming up for me is that when we're doing equity work and when we're having conversations about systemic methods and ways in which people are either disenfranchised or harmed, the harm comes without sometimes an intent, right? So if we're looking at, and thank you for the explanation of how the funding would happen, and I appreciate getting that information as well. If we're looking at how much harm could be caused that was unintentional, and weighing that against what kind of decisions are we making to make it look so that it looks a certain way? My biggest concern is that students, ten years from now, five years from now, one year from now, two years from now, picking up that yearbook, and whether there was intent behind it or not, it's still creating harm. So on some level, there would be a systemic piece that we would be contributing to of creating harm, even if there was no intent behind it. And I think that that's something that we really need to think about and look at because when we're, when we're operating in the systems that we've been operating in for a very long time, it's very easy for us to miss that. And those systems have been that way for a very, very long time beyond us, and it's not just our community having this conversation. So I just think, one of the biggest pieces of conversation, the work that I've seen, the work that I've done in the communities that I've been in, has really been this intent versus impact, impact versus intent. And the impact has the potential. And I'm not saying that anyone intended to do that, that there was, you know, harm was intended, but it can still happen as a consequence of what we see.
So I have some notes that I need to put my glasses on, I still can't read. This is a complex issue, and I appreciate the insight and input from those who have spoken before me. I also appreciate the feedback from those in the community and those on Tabula. I especially appreciate hearing from the tabula referencing that policy and procedure that were outlined for those students were followed. With that said, and I also have, the actual issue of the hand gesture, I've had to do a lot of reading because I was ignorant. This is news to me. So I've been reading and appreciate the articles that have been shared as well by others here. I think the Cubs example was something that was helpful for me because, as I look at what they did, as I read it, is, was not a decision about an individual. It was a statement of, we will no longer tolerate, you know, racial bias. We will no longer tolerate it. That person probably will go to more Cubs games than I will. But the message was sent, and I applaud them. I think as a board, we made a message a month ago by the beginning, or by establishing a racial policy, and as this discussion continues, I think we all knew, and I realize we still have a lot more work to do, to fill out that policy with the procedures and elements that will assure or mitigate the harm that you talk about so well, Gina. The difference I see between that situation and what we're talking about here, in my view, is an issue of timing. The timing is, we're talking about an issues that, as I see it, were done in the fall. The books were printed in the fall, to my knowledge, from what I believe I heard, parts of them.
The pictures were sent to the printer in the fall, and the final photos were sent in March for the-
No, but we're dealing with something that was from a different time, and now we're kind of holding, we're looking at it based on today's newer events and changes or takeovers of symbolism that are appalling. But there is a timing difference, and as I reflect on that, it's, you know, the question is, so do we rewind the clock, which is what this is? Are we allowed to rewind and do a redo? Rewind the clock, or do we move forward? And that's where my, that's the way I tended to look at this. If we rewrite the clock, frankly, the yearbook before this has pictures that probably have the same standards, I think it was mentioned. Do we go back, you know, what do we do to go back in time to say, oh, we're going to correct what has happened in a different time? And I find that a bit challenging. I've seen the photos briefly, and I see a bunch of kids, you know, taking goofy photos in most cases. You know, I don't know what the harm is from those, I don't know what it will be, but there's a lot of, as Matt, I think, articulated, there's a lot of diversity, and it's someone's saying, okay, make a goofy photo, or whatever it is. And there's a variety of gestures. So I don't know. But again, the question is, do we rewind the clock? And my focus is, what do, is, we need to move forward. And moving forward, to me, means we have a lot of learning here that, to me, needs to supplement the policy with procedure. The question was asked, what do we do? How do we, what guidance can we provide to assure that we're not harming when we give the tabula their direction? And I think we need to move in that direction, but I, I'm not in support of rewinding the clock.
Can I just ask what that means in terms of your position on the books?
I would issue the books, I'm not in support of reprinting and redoing the books, and I would support having the books made available to our students.
Craig, I'm sorry, would you like to please weigh in? Craig?
I'm sorry, Jackie, you got it, I mean. I guess I wanted to weigh in on a few things. I don't want to repeat a lot of what has been said. Many of the issues that I have struggled with have been well-articulated by other members of the board who do it very well. I guess a couple of points that I just, I wanted to reemphasize. One was, I did want to acknowledge the hard work of the tabula staff and all the commitment that they've made to the book. And I don't really feel that anything that has occurred is really anybody's fault here, and I certainly would have wanted to come out that way. We live in a really sensitive time, and these are actually very, and these are really difficult issues. And whether we deal with rewinding the clock or whether we don't, I appreciate Todd's perspective as well. I think one thing that strikes me as we think about going forward is that, you know, yes, I worry significantly about the harm that we might be causing if we were to publish it, but I also reflect on the fact that, just in how we've handled this and everything we've done, I mean, harm has already been caused, and we just, we just need to find some better ways of preventing or screening or understanding as we go. So Jackie, if you're looking for indication of which way I'm leaning, I don't know yet in terms of how I'm thinking about this going forward. I'm trying to weigh these issues and sort out what is the best opportunity. I would like to build a little bit on what Sarah had brought up, and I understand the questions about how we have to, you know, protect the integrity of the book. But I'm wondering if, you know, if there isn't a compromise there, that we may deal with hurting the integrity of the book in some way, but in weighing the different options, that might be a better option than starting over. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
I do want to go back and say, if we, one of the questions Ms. Bybee asked regarding the stickers, we would still not have the books because we still have to send them back to the printer to put the stickers in. And so that won't take three to four weeks, but it would take at least two weeks.
I just want to add a piece. My daughter was on Tabula and was one of the lead photographers last year, and so I have to say thank you to Tabula because I'm a mom who witnessed the deadlines and all of the pieces that goes into putting that book together firsthand. It was brutal at my house when that was happening, so I do get that. And so the piece about no blame, you know, this is a very important piece because there's, for me, our conversation is really focused on what do we do about the book and less about what do we do about the potential of white supremacy actions in our schools. And I would like us to, first of all, I feel like it'll be important, as we move forward as a board, to continue to have conversations about what does that actually look like? How does it show up? And how are we systemically supporting our administration in making the changes that need to be made so that we are all a lot more aware? But the idea of placing blame on advisor, educator, a student for not, you know- and less about what do we do about the potential of white supremacy actions in our schools. And I would like us to, first of all, I feel like it'll be important, as we move forward as a board, to continue to have conversations about what does that actually look like? How does it show up? And how are we systemically supporting our administration in making the changes that need to be made so that we are all a lot more aware? But, the idea of placing blame on advisor, educator, student for not, you know, noticing it, not recognizing it for what it is, this is not an individualized issue for me. This is more of a systemic issue. This is more of a larger conversation that I really hope that we are able to engage in. And, the fact that it has come up this year amidst this year of all the other things that have come up. At some point, we do have to have an acknowledgement of the ideologies of white supremacy and white supremacy culture and how it shows up and is impacting our students. As uncomfortable and difficult as that might be, that is still part of the conversation. And so, we do need to have that conversation. So, I just want to be very clear, as a mom who was on Tabula, that I totally support Tabula. And I would love to see the book come out with integrity. And at the same time, as a racial and social justice advocate for students in my life, I would be remiss if I said, "I feel like this should come out as is." Because "as is" is going to cause harm. And I would like some justification, some modification would need to be made in order for me to feel clear that we are making, that we're taking our racial equity policy seriously and that we're intending to not create more harm.
So, at the risk of throwing out a total non sequitur, I'm wondering if it would be possible to do stickers, to do them in-house here, so that it's just, here.
You don't care if it destroys?
It's not here now, right? But, you know, do it in-house, maybe shave off some of that time so that we could actually have these distributed on time. I don't care if it destroys the picture, I think that's the point of the sticker. So, if it does destroy the book when the picture, when the sticker gets pulled off, I think so much the better, frankly. Not that we don't love our students, but, you know, if the intent is to get rid of the symbol. But, I'm also wondering if that $53,000 could be dedicated towards something else that would help further our racial equity policy in a way that is still, you know, not downgrading the impact that this has on students, but in a way that's more proactively addressing the institutional racism or systemic racism that we see every day.
So, we did ask about in-house. We tried to cover the gamut. We have the paper, we have to send it to the printer to print on the paper. Then you'd have to have, I can't remember the name of the cutter, a special cutter to cut it. And you have to try to align it up perfectly because the way the pictures are on the page, some of them have like those things that, so it's not a flat picture. And so, that's why it was suggested it would be much faster if it was done by the printer. And I believe the calculation we were given, it would take 20 or 30 or 40 people working 24 hours a day for a full week, non-stop, to do the 1750 books in time for distribution next week.
But it could be done.
I don't know who we would have, if we did it, in our honesty, it would probably not be a good job because you have to have someone who can cut straight. And you have to have 20 to 40 people willing to give up 24 hours a day for a week. And I just want you to know, we tried to, we've tried to look at every option.
So, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Ford Adams. I do appreciate all the options that you all looked at. And one of the questions that just came up when Sarah, for me, when Sarah was speaking was, what the editors and the, of the Tabula themselves, the students, did they feel that the sticker would actually work? Or was there any conversation with them about the sticker, or?
We had the conversation with the sponsors about the stickers. Initially, we were trying to see what we could work out prior to going to the Tabula staff. We actually, in hindsight, we said this to the students, we should have talked to them before we put the letter out. That did not happen, and we own that. But, we were meeting with the, when it was brought to our attention, we realized we had a very short window because we were really trying to make it by the targeted distribution date. And so, we actually pulled in the sponsors for that.
And what was the sponsors' opinions on the stickers?
That we could put the stickers on, what I just articulated came from the sponsors. If we put the stickers on, they said we had the paper, but we would have to send them to the printer to print on there because you have 1,750 books. And so, you have to have 1,750 of the total of the 19 pictures now to be replaced. And that you'd have to have someone, I can't figure the name of the cutter, the staff probably knows what that cutter is. But you'd have to use the special cutter to cut it. You could put it in the book, but it would take a very skilled hand to do it because, you know, on some pages, the words kind of go like this. They're different configurations. So, it's not just what they told us, a square photo. If you put the square photo there, you could, but you might lose some names or some verdicts.
Yes, Madam?
Jackie, really, you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
Okay, okay, I don't want you to miss out.
Oh, don't worry, I'm handling the meeting, man.
I know, I know, I'm tongue-in-cheek there. The comment at the end that I made about approving this "as is" and urging reconsideration of the decision not to distribute, I wonder, if I could throw that hypothetical at you, Dr. Ford Adams. If we decided not to approve this contract for us tonight, would that be something that you could envision being on the table?
So, are you saying not approve it and give the books out as they are?
As they are, or with some level of, you know, maybe a sheet in the front with some notation indicating concerns or acknowledgement of potential triggering, or whatever the right verbiage would be, some acknowledgement so that we're not seen as, you know, ignoring what we see as potential harm.
At the end of the day, I work for the Board of Education. Whatever the Board directs me to do, I will do. However, based upon the work that we've done and our commitment to racial equity was what caused us to make the decision that we made. Because we've heard multiple students over the course of this year and the three years I've been here talk about microaggressions, the unintended impact, first of all, some intent, some intentional intent and some unintentional intent. And so, I've also heard from some students regarding this. Yes, I've heard from parents and students who have said, "Put stickers on." I've heard from parents and students who have said, "Give the book out as it is." But I've also heard from parents and students who have said, "Thank you for listening." So, I brought forward what I felt and my administrative team felt was the best decision ever. And it was, as I said, it was never intent. And I understand there are people in the room who feel as though by pulling this, there's also an impact, an unintended impact going on too. We went into this knowing it was going to be difficult. But at the end of the day, whatever is the Board's final decision is what I would go with.
I hear you. And, you know, the thing that really turned the tide for me, as I mentioned earlier, is having seen those photos. I had such an expectation and a vision of what I would see based on how a lot of people in this community, and I've read many of the threads on Facebook and different parent groups and so on, that, you know, created this notion of who was doing this. And a lot of it, I think, was extrapolated from that Cubs, Wrigley Field incident. And so, and my experience today, I can only speak from my experience looking at it. I know people here today were, you know, I know, you know, Ms. Hewlett was expressing the frustration of not knowing what is the context, like, there's missing pieces to the puzzle that the community doesn't have. And so, the community's been speaking in a vacuum and in the dark. And so, you know, I just, I just, in one voice, here, but that's where I come from, is having seen it. And again, I realize that I'm a white guy, and I know that. And I come in with that awareness, and that's why many times over this past weekend, back and forth, agonizing, thinking through, I was leaning towards approving this because of what I imagined versus what I saw.
I just want to say one more time, we don't, we have never said that we felt it was any of the students' intent. And we didn't, so that's one of the reasons we have not shown any pictures outside of the Board. That's one of the reasons when, you know, when parents have asked, "Can we see the book?", and we've not. Because we don't want any of our students to be targeted as, "That's you in that picture, and you did this." That's not what we're about. And so, but looking at the whole totality is what caused us to make the recommendation we made. It was not to pinpoint or identify any one child. And that was also one of our concerns with the sticker, that if someone was able to really lift it, even though the printer said it would tear up the page, I don't know. But if someone were to lift it up and then see one of the students in there and say, "So, you're the reason." So, we had to take all that into consideration.
And one more thing I'll say, at this point, the totality is key. If this were one group, one page only, one section of the Tabula, that's one thing. What I saw was a true diversity across the board of this school. And so, that's, so I appreciate that. I've been trying, and maybe I've inadvertently, indirectly been referencing intent. My point is impact. I feel the impact upon seeing this yearbook. Now, I know Gina feels that there will be harm. And, you know, I don't know. That's a viewpoint, and it's probably true with 1,750, there's bound to be people who feel harm. And so, why, you know, it's a balancing act. So, I just, but the totality of that overall is really a key point.
So, Matt, I just want to take an opposing or countervailing view to what you saw when you saw the photos. I too have seen those photos, and I don't, I don't know that it matters that it's a cross-section of the community because I think even one student doing something that is offensive to another student is enough. So, I'm not sure why you seem to think a totality is somehow relevant or why the fact that it's a cross-section of students has made you feel this way. But, in fact, your comments have decided this for me, and I actually will be voting with the administration's recommendation.
Okay.
I have a question also for you, Matt, just for clarity. You mentioned putting some type of insert in, right?
Yeah, maybe, just one possibility would be some kind of a piece of paper.
So, it would be like a disclaimer, like on a pack of cigarettes, like, "Warning, this could cause you serious damage." If you look at it. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna be really frank. It just feels like that's something that would be really challenging to do.
Well, my first recommendation, a preference of being "as is", that trust that, community-wide conversation, the dialogue that's happening in the school, I'm confident that anyone receiving this Tabula will have a sense that, okay, this has been something that there's an issue about.
I'm going to weigh in at this point. The, when I first heard that we, there was concern about the yearbook with the "okay" symbol being used, circle game, it has been called all kinds of things, depending on who you speak with. The first concern I had was for our students, all of our students. And I thought that it didn't matter the ignorance in this community of that, what that symbol can mean or the lack of awareness. What it is, is that it is a symbol that has been co-opted by a white nationalist group. It represents hatred towards people of color. And it has been used, one of the comments talked about. It's been seen in the White House. We're living in a time where hatred, racism, fear, xenophobia have all been used to marginalize people. So, I heard the words tonight, marginalized, inclusivity, diversity, intent. My intent here today, as a school board member, is to do what is best for our students. That has been my goal all along. I respect greatly the hard work and dedication of our Tabula staff. I feel that they were done a disservice when they were not asked to be a part, sit at the table about these conversations, to be able to not feel blamed or guilt or shamed for their work. That should have never happened. That was a misstep on the part of our district. Our students' voice, this is their publication, they should have been allowed to be at the table. Now, that's not to say that that means that we overlook harm. I am struggling so much tonight with the fact that I'm sitting in a room and the harm that could be done is to our Black and Brown students. And as a board that is majority white, we're deciding this based on cost as well as what we have determined, not being able to rewrite history, that it's not as bad as it looks, there wasn't any intent. And in the same way that we did our, have our gender equity policies, we have a racial equity policy. And we, as a district, have talked about looking through our work through a racial equity lens. What that requires is that there will be discomfort when we talk about systemic racism, institutional racism, individual racism. At this point, I am struck by how much learning there is left to do amongst this board, this administration, our school, our district, our community, our country. But what I will not do is sit and say that, I have, I too have seen the pictures. And my first thought when seeing them, before I saw them, was that some of those, some of the pictures are going to look innocuous to me, and some are not. And that's the feeling I had when I looked at them tonight. So, if this book goes out the way it is now, with the understanding that just because this community wasn't aware until a few weeks ago because of a Cubs game, that this was a white national symbol, the world doesn't operate the way old Park does. And that's not always a good thing. We have to do better. This is a learning opportunity. And I refuse, as a board member, as a parent in this community, as a mother who had four children grow through this high school, had a son on trapeze, so I know what those late nights are like, and I know what that hard work is like. But, the comments that I've heard from white community members about, "We are destroying our students' senior year." We're messing up their memories. These are emails that I've received, that the book, you know, they worked so hard, the book has to come out. We never said the book wasn't coming out. We've heard options tonight about having a special time for our seniors to come back and sign the yearbooks. I've heard Tom Hunt be invoked as a reason that the book should go out "as is." Now, my thought, when I first heard about these issues with the book, and then, of course, the press getting a hold of it, thanks to our meet and our instant access to social media as well as media, there has been a lot of speculation. But at the end of the day, integrity matters. And for me, I would never want a symbol of this high school to represent for anybody harm. And that is what the potential is for having this book come out "as is." I'm, I can't even talk about having a disclaimer because a trigger warning suggests that something is amiss within a publication that would do harm. So, we care about all of our students, we have to stand behind that. I care about all of our students, I know everyone here does. But, the discussion void of speaking up about race and racism is very troubling to me. I, we have work to do, Board, because it's not enough to say that we can't rewrite history. I don't think we're trying to rewrite history. I think that what we're trying to do is ensure that we don't harm any of our students. Now, to the cost factor, I was very, I will just say dismayed, disappointed to hear that the way to absorb the cost or defer the cost is through furniture purchases that would benefit our students and our staff. There's got to be a different way. It has to be something that strikes at something that does not directly impact our students.
Can I speak to the furniture? Any furniture that needs to be replaced, we are replacing. Any furniture that needs to be fixed, we are fixing. We has historically put money in the furniture budget, or if someone says, "I want a classroom full of new desks," remember, we went to the flexible furniture. The reason we have money left in the furniture budget this year is with the management. The reason we have money left in the furniture budget this year is with Imagine. We wanted to make sure that once the Imagine project is done, we would have furniture that would fit in those spaces versus buying that furniture now. So, anything that needs to be replaced, we are replacing it, but before, we would, we were buying rooms of furniture just to replace furniture because we were replacing it.
Well, that's very troubling in itself.
Yeah, so we're trying to get a handle on the budget.
Well, we, we, we've got work to do on, on a lot of fronts, so I will just say that if I have to weigh a fiscal cost versus a moral cost, I'm siding on the moral cost. We'll figure out ways to, to cut costs, whether it's with salaries or raises or however it comes out, but I am not willing to have any of our students feel othered because of racism. And I am not ascribing any intent to any student, I am dismayed that it took us this long, given the work that we purport to do around issues of racial equity over the last few years, that this wasn't something that was caught sooner. I am tired, as a board member, of being reactionary and being asked to put out fires. We can do better, we must plan, I agree, we have to be more strategic. I'm not willing to do that on the backs of our students that would be harmed by this, and I am not willing to have our student that was killed two weeks ago be invoked as a reason that this needs to be moved forward in its current position, because I can tell you, as a mother who had a son die in a car accident, if you don't think that Tom's mom or any mom that has lost a child at this school wouldn't rather have their kid be sitting in that Tabula room or in that trapeze room or in any room, being able to bake this rather than being memorialized, I tell you, you've got another thing coming. So be careful how we use the names of those that have been lost when the intent is not always there. I'm not willing to do that. I want integrity for Tom, I want integrity for all of our students, I want us to understand that the narrative that this book is not coming out was always false, false, I don't know where that came from other than talk. I'm so frustrated right now that I hear the words, everyone and all, when all voices have not been heard by people sitting in this room, yet there have been statements made that everyone had a chance to look, and it, Matt, even to your point, it crosses all demographics. Be careful with that, because unless we are willing to, to go chapter and verse, I don't want to give the impression, just like you didn't want to give the impression that it was all white males, that it is this rainbow coalition of students doing okay signs. I didn't see that when I looked through the book, and I did see some instances that gave me pause, mixed with some that I would have looked over myself. Ambiguous signals and symbols are used by racists, and I am not willing to, to say that as-is is the way to go. That's my own personal opinion, that's my own vote. I'm dismayed that we're not reaching a different conclusion, so unless anyone else has something to say, we should probably call the vote.
Mr. Isley?
Yale, is it, uh, a call to vote?
Yes.
And can you reread the motion that was made?
The motion is, move to approve rent reprinting of cost of the yearbook not to exceed $53,794.
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
No.
Ms. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
No.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is our last item, so I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.